Evening. I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Board of Education and the Watertown Town Council on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 to order. Please do the roll call. Here?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. I have a feeling that our finance chairman is stuck in the backup that's on 691 on his way home from work. So I think we'll have to proceed without him. Dr. V, if you would come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. And I just wanted to let you know that our board members are actually online virtually, and we have a number of other board members who are attending multiple meetings this evening. So I'm representing on behalf of everybody, but they just wanted me to make sure that I acknowledge that they are either virtually present or somewhere else. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present our budget this evening. A couple of weeks ago, you had a chance to get your green binders, which is all of our line items. And tonight, I'll go through a presentation and talk through what we are recommending for this year. And there's Ms. Hosking. Okay, perfect. Oh, sure.
Can you just put the microphone a little bit more in front of your face a bit?
You've got it. There we go. All right, awesome. Thank you. So I love to start off with this picture each year, just because our students are wearing their cap and gown, and it takes a good 13 years to get there. And everything that we do, every budget that we pass each year, is in an effort to get our students to this culminating point of graduation. Thank you to our Board of Education members. They do the hard work of going up to the Capitol, working with our local legislators, as well as our senators, to get some of the legislation changed so that additional fundings can come this way. They also do the hard work of working with our community, day in and day out, and try to make our school district the best that it can possibly be. And our goals are collective ones, that we're trying to move forward to make our school district, and continue to make our school district, the gem of our community. This is an image you've seen, and there in the right-hand corner is the Watertown Public Schools' vision of a graduate. And similar to the cap-and-gown photo you saw on the first slide, these are the characteristics and skills that we want to cultivate in our students, not only through the academics of reading, writing, math, social studies, all that kind of stuff, but developing young people who are going to be good citizens in the world. That is what we're here for. And so, again, all of our fiscal resources go towards cultivating those students and those characteristics and knowledge and skills. Our goals as a Board of Education are four specific goals. The first one is always in effort of student achievement and performance, and how to improve the student experience in our schools. The second is to have increased communication and clear communication with all of our stakeholders and all of our partners, so that we can provide an excellent education to our students and families. Our third is to always be on the cutting edge of innovation and research, so that we are implementing best practices in our schools. And our fourth goal is, what we'll talk about tonight, is how we can fiscally uphold, and responsibly and conservatively, a budget that is specific to our goals and not haphazardly used. Each of those four goals, although there's only four, are lofty, and they equate into these operational focus areas for myself, in which I govern and oversee with all of our building administrators. And again, I want to thank all of our building administrators for the day-in and day-out work that they do in our buildings. There's a lot on this page, but I just wanted to share this with you guys. I'm very proud of this. So I've been in the district now for just about three and a half years. It's not a whole lot of time, but it's a little bit of time. And in those three and a half years, we came off the heels of COVID. And after COVID, we were just trying to make sure the ship was going the right way, and we were bracing for the impact of all that had. The year after that, we were ultimately kind of feeling the impact in which it was kind of manifesting through our students' mental health needs, as well as just in the classroom, getting back to the swing of things. And after that, as we were all together, including the town council, as you know, we had a tipping point in our special education department. And so with that, I feel like we've been together as a town, as a community, and as a town council and Board of Education, going through some pretty choppy waters. And now here we are in the start of the fourth fiscal round, where we're about to take some strides and to really grow with intention. And I cannot not address that last year, we passed a full budget, thanks to the town council. I would say, historically, the largest budget ever for the Board of Education. And because of that, you'll see in our next couple of slides, the return on investment that you've offered our community has been great. Now, this isn't even everything. But with the budget last year that we were able to pass, we were able to close the gap in many of our building budgets, and those are kind of the discretionary funds that are used for the consumable materials, as well as some of the discretionary pieces that our building administrators utilize. In facilities and security, although that's capital, the athletic track and the athletic field, the maintenance and the prevention and all of that going into it was able to continue to move forward. We were able to restore our armed security officer salaries. We were able to replace and begin the truck fleet cycle of antiquated and aging-out vehicles. In technology, we had a great stride. We were able to close the gap in restoring our technology budget, which is, I have to say, one of the smaller budgets in the entire, I would say, state of Connecticut for technology. We're just under half a million dollars for all of our buildings. But we were able to replace two completely obsolete tech labs at Watertown High School. And I have to tell you, for our kids who are growing up today with screens, right when they're born, they know when they're in a good graphic design lab, or if they're in a kind of a half mediocre graphic design lab. And right now, we've got two state-of-the-art graphic art design labs, and we're very proud of that. We've been able to upgrade our network up to a 10 gig highway. We're certainly not using 10 gigs as of yet, but we are ready, we're slowly moving up to that. We've been able to enhance our cybersecurity infrastructure, under the direction of our directive technology. And we have new security cameras, finally, at John Trumbull, Polk, and half at Watertown High School, and we're about to outfit the other half. That's all because our town council and our community passed that budget, so we want to thank you for that. In curriculum as well, we've been able to implement a brand-new reading curriculum K5 that's actual tangible materials in the classrooms. We've been hearing testimony from families that kids are coming home as young as kindergarten and first grade, talking about things that they haven't even heard, and their vocabulary is expanding. And our first Board of Education goal, as you saw, was around student achievement and performance. It's little gains, and I know it's ebb and flows of peaks and valleys of data. So we can't always be on the rise, but we heard, town council, we've heard the community say, "We want to see Watertown Public Schools do well. We want to see test scores even go up." We're seeing small growth gains, and so we were able to report that in our last Board of Ed meeting. And again, there'll be dips and valleys there, but we want to celebrate when we're moving forward, and when we're not moving forward, we want to look and see how we can allocate resources in a way to make sure we continue to move forward. We've expanded dual-credit courses at the high school. We've been able to expand our world language offerings down in the middle school. We have engaged students in high-dosage tutoring. We also have, we've kind of been a little bit of a visiting place. We have got a number of school districts who've come to see what we're doing in reading, and they're saying, "Look at what Watertown's doing. Look at what Watertown's doing." So that's a little bit of a feather in our cap right now, and we're feeling good about that. And in special education, I won't go into too much detail here, because there's another slide that's coming up. You've heard me talk a lot about how it's very expensive to outplace our students. One student can range anywhere from $60,000 upwards to more than $200,000 for one outplacement. And the remedy, or one of the pieces to a remedy of that, is to expand our programming in-house. We've been able to do that year over year with town council and partnership there. And last year, we were able to open up a little bit more and a little bit quicker than we thought we were going to be able to do. Because of that, we've downfield blocked some major, unexpected outplacements that could have happened. And in addition, in just a few moments, you'll see that we're going to continue to expand so that we can continue to downfield block those additional costs. This is an old slide, but I like to put it in, because when we talk about budget, people always only think about the dollar signs. But in a school district, it's not just dollar signs. Our bottom line is really about teaching and learning, and it's about implementing an excellent education for all students. It's about cultivating a fair and high-quality work environment for the people that work for us, because we want to keep them here. And also, we want to attract high-qualified people. And we have a whole slew of federal and state mandates and regulatory things that we need to satisfy. And so that's a big part of our work. And all of that is in the effort of serving our Watertown families and the community. So this year's investments. What we would like to put our dollars towards this year is, again, to fulfill our school-building requests. And again, those discretionary items are not huge in amount, but it does give our principals and our building departments an opportunity to buy the consumables they need in their buildings. We are seeing a major uptick in that mental health piece. And so with that, a dean of students at Polk and Swift that we have piloted already now, we would like to continue on that support staff. That is that family kind of connection. In addition, in facilities and security, we are looking to put some fencing around that Swift field. We have put such a huge investment. It's a gorgeous field. It's beautiful. And I know you've heard me say this before, but for some reason, Swift Field is open at all hours of the day. At 3:00 AM, we have people on that field. So we would like to put fencing around that, and so that's part of this. In addition, we have some asphalt in the parking lots at John Trumbull and the Watertown High School that is crumbling fairly significantly, and so we need to do some of that work. And in technology, our Watertown High School audiovisual system has always been an area that we're focusing on. Now, I put an asterisk there, because that I think we can find a grant for, but I just wanted to put it on the radar, that that is an important part of our budget. In addition, we're looking to replace those remaining security cameras at Swift and Judson. We are, again, in technology, making sure that our servers are up and going. And in curriculum, we're expanding the reading curriculum up to the middle school. We'd like to build capacity in terms of intervention. And so we're looking to repurpose our already-existing kindergarten paraeducators to highly-qualified and certified reading paraeducators to build capacity there. And then also to add on interventionists at the middle school, so that we're capturing our students before they hit the high school. Now, in special education, we also hope that we can expand, and I'll talk about that in a moment. In order to get to our number that I'm about to tell you that we've proposed, I've looked into the budget, along with our business manager, where we've been able to reduce and offset. We anticipate that this year, in health insurance alone, we will be able to capture just about $500,000. We have some legislation that passed on VOAG and magnet tuition, and so we anticipate that we will be able to capture about $200,000 in tuition that we would typically pay out. But now that the legislation has passed, we should be able to recapture those funds. In addition, we are becoming smarter, I think, and becoming more facile with kind of the legal landscape. Of course, we still depend on our attorney from lots of support, but I think we can continue to ebb down and reduce our district-wide legal service costs. In addition, we are going to go another year of eliminating some of the district-level PD that we had in place. In addition, because we've been able to fulfill some of our open positions where personnel was a shortage in the years previous, we've been able to reduce on overtime hours. So that's been great, because overtime is typically 1.5 or double time on Sundays. We're also going through an analysis of the athletic budget. And I know everybody gets very nervous when athletics comes up. Athletics is huge, and we're keeping everything as-is, but we are going to do a deep analysis and audit on athletics and how we can become more effective and efficient. We think there's some opportunities there. And again, no impact or change to the student experience in athletics. We do, and you're going to see in just a few moments, a little increase for providing lunch for some of our students who don't quite meet the federal guidelines for free and reduced lunch, and I'll explain that. We also anticipate a little increase, actually not a little, but a fairly significant increase in our transportation costs, because our transportation contract is up. And so we're back out to bid for a fairly large contract. We're in the millions. But First Student has been a good partner to us, and we're also asking what it might be to have contract extension, if the bid process just comes out to be so wildly crazy. But we've put that into our budget as well. And as an offset, we don't, as a public school system, have a lot of revenue-generating opportunities. However, the technology piece is so important, and it's something that cannot not be used in a school district. We are looking to implement a technology insurance and replacement fee for each of our families. It's a fee that's not too crazy expensive, but enough that it will generate about $38,000 that we hope to offset. And then we also, again, as we grow some of our special education programming, we're looking to increase tuition possibilities by attracting students to come to some of our highly-specialized programming. Not just any of our programming, but some of our highly-specialized programming. Okay, so very busy. However, I just want to show, thanks to the budgets we've passed over the years, and even prior to me getting here, in-house special education programming has expanded in the town of Watertown significantly in the last 10 years. Knowing that our students stay with us for a duration of 13 years, if not more, because by legal statute, we keep our students until 22 years of age now, we know that our students move from preschool to kindergarten, from primary school to elementary, from elementary to middle, from middle to high school. And as they grow, we have to make sure that we have places and programs that provide their services. This year alone, in preschool, our birth-to-three students who are coming into the community have increased so significantly that we've had to expand preschool by one. So you can see in that very right column that we're moving from four to five sections of preschool. We also expanded this year something called the Tiger Den at John Trumbull. That is an autism spectrum disorder-specific specialty classroom. We had earlier this year anticipated students who came into the community who would have typically have been outplaced. However, we very quickly mitigated the possible cost that might come with that, and we were able to provide the services. So we opened Tiger Den this year. You see that there's a one-to-one section increase there. And we're very happy that we can provide those services for those students. Legislation passed that kindergarten for students who are four years of age now, they would have to wait until September 1st to be five years. There's a lot of just murky ground there, and so what we've done is we've opened a transition kindergarten to welcome our four-year-olds in, and so that's an opening classroom. However, you'll see the word "bubble." It's not going to be with us forever. It's going to be the bubble transition year that just kind of moves through us. Because our students are aging, we are going to be opening an autism spectrum classroom at Judson as well, so that as our students graduate, they can move into the elementary-intermediate years. We have an alternative classroom opportunity and a WTA opportunity expansion at the Seaman Building. Now, that is off-site of our campus. We have an already-existing WTA at Seaman, but with the increase in students, who we are now keeping till 22 years of age, and with the continuum and the difference in needs, we're looking to expand by one classroom. That is the one classroom where I believe we can also recruit and attract tuition-paying students from other districts. So that's a real opportunity for us there. So this is, I have to applaud our community and applaud our town council, as well as our Board of Education, for knowing the details of how to provide the services like this so that we can mitigate larger, much larger costs, if students are being outplaced. So this is the increase that I was talking about. We're anticipating about a $40,000 increase. We have, as a community, increased in the number of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. That means students whose income levels for a family of four are $39,000 or less. By those federal guidelines, if a family of four is making $39,000 or less, they are eligible for free breakfast and free lunch. In John Trumbull, Polk, Swift, and the WTA, we are officially designated as a Title I or severe need designation by the state, meaning that we have over 35% of our students who are eligible for that free and reduced lunch. Now, as you know, every time you go to the gas station to fill your tank, or you pay your heat bill, $39,000 for a family of four is almost impossible to live in the state of Connecticut. If we were in Alabama, maybe, but not here in Connecticut. And so we have a number of families, just under 100, that we turn away, that are just above that cutoff point, that we say, "We can't give for free and reduced lunch, because you don't make that income cutoff." But we know that it's still a major financial hardship for them, because they're just in that cusp. So what we would like to do through this budget is to set aside $35,000 to $40,000 to help offset, not the full amount, but some amount of that breakfast and lunch cost for those students. Now, this can also change, depending on whether or not the governor decides to change the legislation and make free and reduced breakfast and lunch for everybody again, but I don't anticipate that happening sometime soon. So that is what you will see as a slight increase in the budget, as well as about $40,000, 35 to 40. It's about $1,100 a year to feed a student breakfast and lunch every day for 180 days. Teeny-tiny, but important, our class sizes in Watertown are very, very conducive to learning. We range anywhere from 17 upwards to 25 students in a class. That is a very positive and amicable way of looking at a classroom experience. Typically, when budgets start to get squeezed, we look to personnel, because that's our largest piece, and that's how that impacts class size. But we are proud of our class sizes. This I just wanted to share. So we had an enrollment study done this year. And the reason I wanted to make sure that I included this was because sometimes I hear in the community, even people that I don't even know, just strangers, who say, "Oh, my goodness, the enrollment's dropping, the enrollment's dropping, the enrollment's dropping, and there's no more children at Watertown Public Schools." That is not actually accurate. So with the enrollment study, I just want to share that in the Northeast, you can see there, we do see a slight decline in public schools. Families are either choosing to homeschool, or they're going to private school, or whatever it may be. However, for the Watertown Public Schools, for the next 10 years, and again, as you all know, a projection, anywhere beyond five years, it starts to get a little murky. So I would do another enrollment study in the next couple of years. We have a fairly steady enrollment over the next 10 years, and we're about plateaued at where we are. So whether that's births from the preschool or kindergarten age, or it's kids aging out and just growing through the system. So if anybody is really coming up to you and saying, "Oh, my goodness, the enrollment's declining. There's no more children in the schools," not really the case. You'll see a little tick uptick in the next five years, but we're pretty much plateaued. So what we anticipate now is what we can anticipate over the next 10. So we are looking for and recommending an increase of 3.98%, which is just a little over $2 million, for a total budget of $56,105,902. And that would allow us to achieve all those investments that I just talked about in the slides before, including the special education program expansion. And this is a breakdown. As you know, our largest piece is salaries and benefits. 76.25% of our budget is dedicated to that, because human capital is ultimately what our business is. Then next to that is special education and transportation, two very high costs. I have to say, special education, although extremely volatile, as you know, because anytime a student walks in unanticipated, it can swing us anyway, they've been holding steady and holding the line very tight this year. And so we're looking at an actual, if you see the numbers, a slight decrease in special education because of the full funding from this year. But again, a volatile line. And then facilities and others, we're actually flattening out completely, and we're either delaying some projects next year, or we're hoping that we can figure out some other grants. And delaying, we can do to some extent. So we've decided to do some delaying. This is just a plug to know how the legislation impacts us. So excess cost grant is a huge grant that we get that helps reimburse excess special education costs. We were supposed to receive, as a district, 76% this year. We are only receiving 67% to 73%, because fiscally, whatever happened up at the Capitol, it just didn't shake out that way. So we are sometimes at the mercy of what the state can provide us. But with that, I have to say that we've been able to mitigate some of that with the program expansion. So that's been good. But this is where our Board of Education comes in and really fights for our town at the Capitol. Education cost sharing as well, I know I've shared this with you before, but that red line there, that plateaued line, that's actually really realistically what's been happening, plateauing. But I know that even Senator Brathell and State Representative Paletta have been working hard, have been working hard, to try to increase education cost sharing. And I believe that this year, we should see a little bit more of that to help offset how the town pays for the Board of Education. I think after this year, we're going to see a little dip in that, but at least there's one year where we'll see a bump. And so that hard work of advocating has paid off. So again, and myself, as a superintendent, this is my commitment. I focus on the students to make sure that teacher-student content experience is sacred. I will always realistically acknowledge the needs of our district, no matter how hard it may be. And we'll always prioritize and make sure that we're reliably steering. And truly, one step at a time, I truly do believe that as your superintendent and as our community superintendent, I would love to do 50 million things all at the same time, but we can only do one thing at a time. So that's how we are building this budget. So one more time, 3.98% increase. That's the total amount. And that's just, thank you, and that was just the schedule of meetings. If there are any questions, you guys have your binders. And if you don't have a binder, we have two extras here. I'm happy to speak to any of the lines.
Can I ask a first question? Does anyone have any questions? Gary?
How many teachers have you hired from last year to this year, and how many left?
An increase. Okay. You know what? I can do that really fast for you. I don't have the aggregate number. However, if you look in your binders, each one of your schools has a narrative discussion. And on the left-hand side, it shows staffing. If there was an increase in staffing, it would be bolded, and you'll see an increase in a teacher or a section. And if there was not, or if there was an elimination, it would have been crossed out. So at this point, the additional teachers past budget, because we've been able to offset, would be the dean of students. That would be at the Polk and Swift School. But the way we were able to do that was we had other openings that we did not fill. We had to give somewhere.
Thank you. I noticed, looking through the packet, mention of a special education transportation consortium for next year.
Yes.
Can you speak to that?
Sure. So the way our specialty transportation works, so this is not our yellow bus for a student that takes our community's students to and from buildings. We have students who go to outplacements, as well as to specialty placements, who need specialty transportation, either through a private van, private car, or a private bus. We are always looking for the best possible cost, and also within regulations of the state. So we used to have 10 or 15, maybe even more, different private companies that would ultimately provide us this transportation. We found that in COVID, and again, they had to do what they had to do. They're a business. There was no cap on how much they could charge school districts. And so we were at the mercy of whoever could provide transportation and whatever cost that they were kind of invoicing us for. So if a regular ride, and this actually happened, was $250 a day, one time they said, "It's now $600 a day," or $550 a day. And we're like, "How do you even increase something like that?" So we were always looking for the lowest possible cost. But the consortium, what it has done now, it has brought three or four school districts together. Woodbury, Watertown, Middlebury, Region 15, and I believe Bethel and Newtown used to be, but I think Newtown might have dropped out. And what they've done now, through advance, is with our four districts, we're sharing rides. And with that, we're able to actually reduce the daily cost of a ride for specialty transportation. At the moment, we're seeing about $15,000 savings by going with consortium in comparison to whether or not we were going with all of our private vendors. Next year, we anticipate that it's going to be slightly less savings, maybe only $5,000, because we have a couple more transport pieces where we're not going to be sharing anymore, because either those kids have graduated from other districts, or they've moved on, and now our student is a singleton on the car. But we're still seeing a fairly good experience, I would say, with the consortium.
Thank you so much.
Rachel?
I have a few questions. I just want to follow up on that. So does that mean the students, there'll be more than one student in a car?
Correct.
Do you have an estimate of like how much time they might be spending in the car?
Yep. So by legal requirement, we're not allowed to have students in a car for more than one hour.
Okay.
So all rides have to be less than 60 minutes. And if you tip over, then we have to get another car anyway.
Okay.
But for the most part, our rides are reasonable, unless we have students who are in very specialty outplacements, who are traveling very far.
Right. Okay. I had a question about the pie chart slide from your presentation. At the bottom, there was a table, and I don't know if I was just misunderstanding, but where you had, on the left-hand column, description, salaries, benefits, transportation, et cetera, you had the budget number, so I'm... you had the budget number. So I'm assuming that's for this upcoming budget, and then the percent of the budget, and then the percent difference. Am I interpreting it correctly? That so for salaries, it's like a $2.2 million difference? So that's, it's 2.2 million more this year?
Correct.
So then the percent change would be 7%, not 102.57? So I don't know what is hap-
Ah.
Right?
That is a typo, yes.
Okay, they're all, so they're all wrong. All, they're down the whole, I don't know if it was just a formula in the spreadsheet that's incorrect.
It probably was.
But like, the next one's 1.8, the next one is 7.58, then it's negative 2.89, zero, and negative 5.58.
You took a percentage of the difference, is what you did.
Yeah, I see, I see what happened there. Let me just quickly.
Because later in the packet-
Yeah.
-there is a table that says the grand totals for salaries, which includes certified, non-certified tutoring, substitute, and athletic, is about 6.62%.
Yeah. So, okay, so if you momentarily just shield your eyes from that, so I apologize about that. If you, we have six collective bargaining unions, and so with all of those increases, because contractual increases, we came in as a total budget increase, everything else flat. Just that would be about 4.28%. So in order to bring that down and also put in all the investments we put in, we're hoping to capture that health insurance piece, as well as the reductions, other reductions that I put in there. So you are correct. I can go back in, and I'll fix that, and I'll fix that on our main website as well. But actually, that's an important part. Just with contractual increases, we would have been at a 4.28% increase, but we were able to bring it down to 3.98% because we were able to find those other places to, again, either delay or reduce or eliminate altogether, and then bring back later on. But I will adjust that. Thank you for catching that.
Okay, thank you. And then back to the salaries, can you just explain the math to me? I'm on the page towards the back of the booklet, that's the table.
Yep.
Just going over the different salaries. So for the tutoring and the substitute salaries, that's a pretty sizable increase, 30.6 and 41.9. Does that mean you're adding more personnel to, so there'll be more tutors and more substitutes? Or are they getting a very large salary increase?
No, not a salary increase at all. So let me just make sure I'm looking at the right place. So what actually has, thank you, okay, perfect, tutoring and substitute salaries. Okay, perfect. So substitute salaries are utilized when our faculty are out. So as per any of our collective bargaining agreements, teachers have upwards of however many sick days, however many personal days, so on and so forth. When they're out, the classroom is still open, kids are still in session, so then we bring in a substitute. Substitutes have a daily rate. I believe we're at $105 a day now, which is probably on the lower end, not the absolute bottom, but also some districts offer like $125 a day for substitute rate. That ultimately is not so much how much they're getting paid, but rather how much our teachers are being absent, and so we have to fill it with substitutes. I think that's how I would better say that number reflects. So at this point in time, we are seeing a slightly higher need for substitutes, and so that's why that number's going up. In terms of tutoring salaries, you're actually seeing a slight reduction in tutoring since FY '22, but a slight bump up from last year. So it's important to know that tutoring can last for homebound tutoring students who have medically fragile situations in their home, and they can't come to school, and so they get tutoring from us. Tutoring is also for students who are sometimes expelled, and they don't go into a program, but rather it is our statutory obligation to provide them schooling. And then tutoring comes in other forms as well for students who receive not just intervention, but specialized support in the school. So we had a significant decrease from '23 to '24, but now we're seeing a slight climb again in our tutoring costs.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And then I saw, and now I'm not sure where, oh, actually, sorry, let me go back to the 6.82. So I understand that's like a contractual, you know, union organized. So does that, so is like a 6.82% change, does that mean that certified salaries increased by 6.82%? Or how does that work in terms of like what are, like what's a classroom teacher seeing?
Sure. I can, I can give on average. So please take my numbers as approximations at this point, because I don't have each of the contracts in front of me. So relatively, when we go into negotiations, we're trying to come in within the average of what local and regional districts around us are also coming in, so that we don't necessarily get to arbitration or mediation. I have to say, we've been running a pretty tight ship when it comes to negotiations. We are thankful, and we honor the commitment of all of our collective bargaining units, but we also know that we're trying to hold a fiscal line. So we, again, don't come in on the absolute barrel of the bottom when we come, go into negotiations. We also don't come at the top, but we do try to stay within areas so that we don't make our way to arbitration. So for, I think, our teachers, over the next three year-
Is it three years or four years?
Three years. We came in around the 12% mark. So it's about just a little, little over 4% a year increase. For our paraeducators, we were not hitting our minimum wage requirements, and so we needed an actual equity adjustment in that contract. So we were coming in a little bit higher, probably around the 6% a year, over 3, so probably just under 18, maybe around 17% increases. And we're about to go into four contracts with our custodians, cafeteria, nurses, and secretaries. So we have folded in projected increases in each of those contracts. But again, we don't typically come out on the top, and we don't come in and barrel the bottom. We try to come in just below the average or the average, so that we don't have to get to arbitration.
Okay. And sort of one more question about percentages. I saw in one of the tables, it said that for the central office, there was a 24.2% increase.
Uh huh. So central office is, and I'm just going to make sure I'm looking at the right page. I took your binder, Marie, and now you can't find the page.
Yeah.
It was the same page. It's in the same page. This one here, right?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So cen- What is this line?
That's the difference between the increase-
Yeah, I know, but what's in?
Oh, that's our entire central office staff. Those are secretaries.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So this is Marie Kishuba, our business manager.
Hi, sorry.
Thank you, sorry. She'll just help me out here. So central office includes secretarial staff, non-affiliateds, is it non-affiliateds?
Non-affiliates or non-affiliateds.
No. Okay, so secretaries.
Did we have an increase? We didn't have an increase in staff. It's just our entire central office staff.
Okay, central office staff. So that would be all of the secretaries that work in payroll, accounts payable, human resources, benefits, my administrative secretary, and that would be in that category.
Okay. So how come, how come it went up by 24.2%?
We actually have several more contracts that are up for negotiation this year. We went in conservatively with what we anticipated the contract increases to be. So I'm sure that that's a portion of this. It's really only a $33,000 increase when you're looking at the number. So it's just the percentage looks higher, but when you're talking about a dollar amount over the course of the number of employees, it's really not. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I do.
And if you needed a breakdown of that, we can certainly provide it to you.
It's behind there.
I just saw that that number.
Particularly on individuals.
Stood out to me.
You're all so.
I did, sorry, just one more statement. And this booklet was excellent, by the way. Thank you. It was really helpful, and I thought it was the best organized that I've seen from you. And you always give excellent presentations. So this one was really, really helpful. So thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, and I never want to speak over Dr. Villalueva, on some of these salary increases, well, you have to remember that at certain times, there's sort of like a fiscal cliff going on with grants. So some people who had normally been possibly partially paid through grant, the grants are no longer in existence. So that also explains some of the increases as well.
Okay, okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Melissa. Rob?
Yes, Doctor. You mentioned about a $500,000 savings in medical.
Yes.
But I see you're still going up by 1. something percent.
Correct.
Over. Is that reflected in here? Because I see that there's a $750,000 savings, but then 550 of that went to HSA that you never budgeted before. So that's $250,000 savings, but you're still-
Yeah.
-over by 170,000 in that line item.
So health insurance right now is a evolving situation. We've just moved brokers, and our new enrollment period starts April 1. I put in $500,000 as a projection. I don't want to say whether it's conservative or if it's over as of yet until they do their final and full analysis. But I do anticipate that a full $500,000 will be able to be essentially reaped from it. If it's not reflecting here, the way in which it's going to come out, I have to somehow figure out how to absorb it elsewhere to come in at the 3.98%. That's the goal. But for now, that's how I put it in. So I haven't totally answered your question.
But you're showing, in your budget, you're showing 775,000 less than that line item.
Okay. Tell me which page you're on.
I'm on page seven.
Yep.
Let's see, page seven, employee benefits, 521001.
Thank you.
And again, you can see the line right below it, and you weren't budgeted for an HSA in the past.
The HSA in the past was budgeted, but it wasn't its own line items. So this year, with all of the murky waters, if we want to call it that, for, we made HSA its own line. So I removed the $500,000 from the medical line and applied it to an HSA line. So it's completely transparent what that money's being used for and where it's going. So that $500,000 was normally part of the 7.1 million or the 7.6.
Okay.
I just moved it to its own. Actually, moving forward, we are lining out everything, so that you can see every detail of what goes into medical, dental, and any of that, because it used to just be a lump. And I think that's the opportunity that our new broker is going to help us kind of weed through.
So it's really not the, it's really not 500,000 in savings, it's 250, according to this?
No, it's $500,000 overall. Yeah.
But you don't reflect, you're not reflecting now.
I don't think I'm following. I guess I just maybe-
You reduced the employee benefits, the health benefits, by $775,000, correct? But then you've added back in 550,000. So you're $225,000, right, minus?
Yes, but part of the, part of the reason being that in last year, and I don't know if you recall the numbers, we used 12.7 as the estimate for medical instead of the 13.1, which was supposed to include $400,000 for a reserve. So this year, we were told to go off of the 13.1 again. So that would explain the difference, because we wanted to budget for the 13.1. And if you're not sure what the difference between 13.1 and the 12.7? Seven. Seven is. Rounded. The brokers give us a projection of how much we should, as Marie just said, put into a reserve. And last year, we could not afford that savings account. So we went with what would just cover our costs. But this year, we're able to do that. I wonder if I could just highlight what you're seeing there, and then I could send a follow-up email with a clear for you.
Right, because to me, a $500,000 savings-
Right.
-should reflect in here at a $500,000 savings, and this is not reflective of that in here.
Right. So I see the reflection of it, but I just want to make sure that I can-
Okay.
-make it the same as yours. So I'll follow up with an email to clarify how that is reflected here.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes.
What is, and I didn't find it in here, and sorry, I just saw it because you spoke about feeding the children.
Yes.
What does it cost us a year to feed every child? Right? What did it cost us last year? Since we didn't pay for it, the federal government paid for it, but we must have kept track of what it cost every student.
Okay, so I'm-
For us to feed every student at no cost.
Yep. I'm going to give you a really rough estimate, because I don't have the food service department's exact number with me, so please don't take this as a to the penny. But if we're saying...
I know with the, with the per meal rate is that they reimbursed us, it's, you know, if it costs us $3 for, you know, a lunch, I think they were reimbursing us like 250 of that or whatever. But I don't know what it is for, you're talking for one student.
Yeah, I guess, you know, if we took it over, because I'm sure there's a lot of students out there who, or a lot of families out there who fall underneath that threshold that are embarrassed, that, and they don't want their, you know, they don't want people knowing how much money they have.
They don't fill out the form because of the stigma.
And, you know, and I know this was a whole big state thing here when the gentleman passed away. He was on the Board of Education here in town.
Oh, Mr. Lambert?
No.
Tom, not Lambert?
Guy. Guy. That was big on his agenda, is to feed every kid, no matter how much money, no matter what class-
Right.
-you were in. And I don't, I didn't see it in your budget, and I don't know if in the past budgets that you've budgeted since COVID-
Yeah.
-a line item for that. And was that line item used for something else, because the state paid for all the lunches?
Right.
And now we're into the scenario where we have to budget again for all of these lunches. And I don't want to see any child in our town go unfed.
I would agree with you, and I appreciate the empathy that you're demonstrating, because sometimes people don't quite understand just how important breakfast and lunch is. So food service is actually, and I'm going to air quote this, a self-sustaining account on its own, and that's why you don't see it in your budget book. They bring in revenue through the sale of lunches, and that revenue is then put right back into the cost of paying for their personnel and their, their kind of outfit. What happened in COVID was nobody was buying lunch, because nobody was here. And so there was no revenue coming in, but we were not by statute supposed to lay anybody off or anything of that sort, and so we still had personnel we were paying for. So what happened was, we were incurring costs in a self-sustaining account for personnel, but no revenue coming in. And so what ends up happening is, then by statute, we have, we are obligated to feed our children, even though that's a self-sustaining account, it came over to general fund. So then general operating fund had to fill the gap of what was then incurred through the self-sustaining food fund. COVID relief money then came, which we were able to then put back into the food fund to start up for the following year. And that's how they've gotten back to being self-sustaining again. That year, however, where we incurred those general operating costs, was that year where I came for that very large appropriation because of those COVID incurrences. At this point in time, we would not be able to incur all the costs of breakfast and lunch for free for all of our 25 or so hundred students. As I mentioned, it's about 1,100 students a year, if you're buying one breakfast, one lunch, and we're getting the full reimbursement from the state. And so it would be a lot. But you are correct. I do think a number of families choose not to fill out the forms, and so we do a lot of active outreach to our families, not just through our food service department, but through our school counselors, who have a great relationship with them, to say, it's not a stigma thing, it's private. That's the other thing to know about free and reduced lunch lists. Nobody has access to them. I don't even have access to them as a superintendent. It is so locked down on that free and reduced lunch list, that if a family feels like they're going to be stigmatized, nobody would know. The superintendent doesn't even know. The only way I get access to it is if I go and call the state, and they release something to me. But to that point, we wouldn't be able to incur everybody's breakfast and lunch. But we do know that we have a good number of families who have that hardship, and we do want to provide that, at least some subsidy to them in that respect.
One last statement on that. I would encourage you to find the money within your budget to provide at least one free meal per student per day.
Yep.
Lunch or breakfast.
Yep. And I would agree. And we do. So when we have balances at the end of the year, that comes out of general operating fund.
Okay. You also talked about Senator Burtell and Representative Paletta, and possibly getting you some money. So if they do get you money- So if they do get you money, is that money that's spent, or is that money that's gonna come back to the general fund?
So.
Because what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see that, yes, you've made this money, and they gave you an extra $2 million, and then
Right.
next year, your budget goes up by that amount because you've, you've spent that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking at it as, this is what your budget is. If they find money for you, then I guess I would expect that money to come back to us at the end of the year and go into the general fund.
So if I could offer a different perspective, as opposed to Senator Burtell and Representative Paletta, who are not here this evening, so I don't ever want to speak on behalf of them, they can certainly be here to speak on behalf of themselves. But if I can offer a different perspective, it's not so much that they're finding me money to then offset a budget. What it is, is we are advocating for an education funding system that has been plateaued for over 10 years at this point. If you look back to that screen where the red line has been flat and the blue line for educating a child continues to increase, that means that our municipal tax dollars have been going to fill in that cushioned expansion in the middle. It is a deep burden on our municipal taxpayers. So I think when legislation passes and increased education funding comes out, it's not so much, it's a spending spree, it helps lessen the municipal tax dollars on how to offset the education costs of a child. So rather than 3.98% plus the town increase, all going to the taxpayer, we can say, we're receiving more education cost-sharing funds, which does not come to the Board of Education, I want to clarify that. Any education cost-sharing funding goes straight to the town, and the town puts that towards our budget to offset our budget. So when more money comes from the state, that is the town's ability to then say, yes, you asked for $56 million, but instead of 11 million this year, we got 12 million this year, and that's gonna help offset $56 million. So I hope that I can clarify that it's not an additional check of $2 million that suddenly comes from the state. It's offsetting the municipal tax costs that a, that a town would have to incur either way for the Board of Education. But Mr. Ratalick, I want you to know that I hear you loud and clear. We are always trying to work within our budget, and if anything, we're looking under every rock to find every possible penny in which we can become more efficient or more effective. At the same time, that hard work at the Capitol is really important, and it does, it takes so much time. It just takes so much time. So again, we can't afford our own lobbyist, but I have situated myself on the legislative team for our superintendent's group. They can afford a lobbyist, and I can at least voice my concerns on behalf of our small community. Sometimes our needs are very different from a large waterbury or a New Haven. They need something else. But at least I can be out there to pepper the voice a little bit. And I have had a number of meetings with Senator Burtell and Representative Paletta, because they are doing the hard work up there. And I think they're facing some, you know, opposition too, and so they themselves can only move so quickly, so, yes.
I have one more, and I'm sure you're probably not gonna know the answer to this, but
Okay.
I'm gonna ask that somebody find the answer for me, is that we have four or five schools that are built in town that have all been remodeled, renovated. What size, what is the student load that each school was built to have?
Each building.
Each building. What was it designed to have? So I see in your, your thing, you said there's 500 and something students at Judson. Was Judson designed to have 500 students, or was Judson designed to have 1,400 students?
Right.
And I think that will answer a lot of our questions
Sure.
too, whether student sizes are right. Is there the ability to close a school and consolidate schools? And I think that would give us some information. So if somebody could get that information for me, I'd appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely, I can certainly do that. And please do know, we have gone down the exercise of taking a look at what it would cost to close a school. And if you would like to see that information, I can certainly provide that as well. Just so, the takeaway on the closing the school is, you close a school, that may be the case, but the children still exist, and they have to be put somewhere. So I can happily answer those. So I have two questions that I will get back to you on in the follow-up email. Number one is the health benefits, just clarification on that line. And number two is, what is the student capacity and load for each of the buildings?
Great, thank you, doctor.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, her?
If I could back up a bit, regarding students having breakfast and/or lunch as needed, I find it admirable that your staff is doing the proper thing, and doing so by reaching out through the counselors.
Yep.
Obviously, some information has been gleaned by the counselors through other staff, and the approach is made, not to embarrass anybody
That's right.
to see if there's a need. And if there is a need, you can't force people to take it, but the approach is made through the staff.
Right.
Very admirable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for tonight's presentation. My question is, how, how much are we spending per student in this budget? I don't know if you have that offhand. I did some quick math, but, and how are we comparing to, to what other towns are spending per student? Because, you know, we hear that Water Town's not spending enough, but, you know, I think that we may be spending enough.
Yeah.
Certainly, I think, but I want to hear from you, not from me, so.
So I can find you an actual comparison, just from our district reference group, which is ultimately similar districts in our income bracket. I hope I'm not sticking my foot in my mouth. I think we're okay. We're not, not spending enough on our students. We're spending what we need to spend on our students.
What is that?
So right now, our aggregate per pupil expenditure is about $19,500 a student. But again, it can range, right? Because if you have students with special education needs. But we're just under the $20,000 mark. You don't want to be a district who has a gigantic per pupil expenditure of like $29,000, and you don't want to be the district that has a $15,000 per pupil expenditure. So we're, we're just under that below half mark. So I think we're, again, no foot in my mouth, but I think we're okay.
Yeah, I was just running, I saw about $21,000 and change. I don't know if that's correct for this next budget. Maybe if you can confirm that and send that to us with a comparison of where we are with other municipalities of our, maybe in our area, or also, and the approximate size?
Yep.
I think that would be something that's just information that I think is valuable to know.
Absolutely.
And then, and then I'm done. And finally, these questions, when you're sending these to us, this is just a suggestion for the chair, if you can perhaps send it to the chair so that we
Sure.
we can all, because I'd like to know the answers to Rob's questions as well and everyone else's.
You got it.
Thank you.
We can send it to the same distribution unless we give the monthly reports to.
I just have a quick, simple transportation question. I think last year, you had mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, but First Student was the only company that actually bid on the job, correct?
So that happened prior to my arrival in the district, and after you had mentioned that, I actually did some research, but it does look like that was the case.
Right. What do you expect to happen this time around?
Um, so I'm in anticipation that that happens again. That's why I had asked First Student if they would be open to potential contract extensions. So again, we're still discussing that. But either way, our RFP's going out, and we're gonna try to get bids. If nobody bids, we're going to court as well. Court meaning, I'm physically gonna reach out to each, you know, All-Star, DADCO, the usual suspects to try to get a bid. But if they don't bid, they don't bid.
How many do you actually reach out to?
Well, I've got five right off the top of my head.
Okay.
If there's more, I mean, please let me know.
Yeah, and thank you for the presentation. It was very crisp and easy to understand.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Down here.
Apologize for my tardiness.
That's okay.
You had one slide up there related to showing that there, there's an anticipation for an increase in students in the coming years. Do you know what data was used to come up with that conclusion?
Right, yep. So they use birth, birth rate data, and they also look at historical transition data. But I can give you the full report if you like, because they have like a whole bunch of small, small print at the back that shows what they use. But I know that birth rate is one big piece, and the historical transient data is part of it, yeah.
There's a lot of other studies are saying, you know, the senior population's getting larger and larger, and I guess it was a slight surprise that.
That it would increase.
And even what their logic is for that, you know.
Yeah.
The first five years, okay, you could kind of predict that, because those kids are already born, but then after that, where those numbers are coming from. And my next comment, it's more of a comment than a question, but it goes back to Rob's questions on the health insurance, and if we're saving 700,000, why are we only seeing, you know, 200,000? Was the initial estimate on savings, was it based on like the current year data versus when the insurance will renew? As in, there might have been savings on what was in place as of, let's say, January 1st, but at renewal, you know, we saved 700,000, but then at renewal, bumped back up to make it so that the net savings is a lot less than that? I don't know if that was the scenario that you might be running into, or not.
So I, I think I understand what you're saying, so hopefully I'm, I'm correct about this, and if you're interpreting it differently than what I answer, please feel free to jump in. I don't think so, so it's not gonna be a net. We do anticipate a full, straight-up $500,000.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else? Gary?
Two questions. One, I see on lease and rental, went from $0 to $80,000, $80,253?
Yes.
Is there, what's, what's being leased or rented?
Yep, so the truck fleet is a new cycle for us.
Okay.
And so that is part of it, and I, is it also? Is it also equipment? Okay. Perfect.
All right, and the other question they had is, I think John Trumbull, I don't know if it's the Parent Teacher Association, during the year, they advertised on social media for, for smart boards for the students.
Yes.
And I know they raised between 22,000 and 24,000.
They did.
But then they, then there's a talk that they're gonna change it to smart TVs instead of smart boards.
Correct, yes.
But I haven't seen anything, they haven't installed anything yet.
Not as of yet. So can you believe it? But smart boards came out 23 years ago, I think, a little bit more. It's crazy. So they're becoming actually obsolete, and the parts to actually fix a smart board are no longer being made anymore. And so school districts, as of five, six years ago, started to change over to smart screens, which ultimately, we know as smart TVs. And so very luckily, our John Trumbull PTA is very active, they did raise that much money, and they are already outfitting with a few smart screens. They're very costly, you can imagine. And so to outfit a school district with all of them, we're looking at a five-to-six-year plan of how to slowly phase out the boards and put in the new smart screens. But John Trumbull will have a bit of a head start on all the other schools.
Maybe they can encourage the rest of the schools to do the same thing.
Yeah. Jonathan, okay?
I did have one other question that you might not have an answer to in front of you, but now it's been a few years since you guys installed the solar panels at a couple of the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Any idea if the savings that were, I would say originally sold to you guys
Yeah.
projected, if we're coming anywhere close to what
Right.
we thought we might have saved?
Right. So that was also before my time here. We are seeing some savings on the solar panels. To be plain and frank, I don't think we're seeing as much as what was promoted to us, but we do see some savings from the solar panels.
Okay. I had a few questions, but a lot of them have been answered, so that's good.
Okay.
One that I haven't, when you talked about the bubble class at the transitional level.
Yes.
Is that a new hire, or is that a position that's currently in, in place?
Yep, so it's actually a position that's currently in place. So what's interesting about the statute was that they put it in, and they ultimately wanted it in yesterday, not realizing that families who have children who are about to turn four have probably been thinking about coming to kindergarten for the last four years. Anyhow, we typically have, let's just say, 11 sections of kindergarten. With the new statute, we would have gone to 10 sections of kindergarten and then one additional section of an extended preschool, which is just an awkward and strange thing. So if we keep the 11 sections in kindergarten, let those four-year-olds, statute just come in and be the bubble class, then they keep going up, and then anybody now must be five by September 1, according to legislation, starting in 2025. And then our preschool will also stay the same. So FTE-wise, it's a wash. It's just a matter of whether the kids go into Bubble K, or if they go into like a third year of preschool, which for families, they would prefer to have a Bubble K. I do strongly believe that.
Okay. The other thing, you mentioned a potential fee for electronics
Technology.
which sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
And I understand you mean that a student that takes home something, it would have to be insured for damages?
Correct, and it's, it's not a crazy amount. I think we're looking at about $38 per student, so that, you know, things happen. Keyboard keys come off, screens get cracked, the hinges on your Chromebook come faulty. We get those and we repair them, we put in new keypads, things of that nature. Your insurance would take care of all that. You lose a cord, you know, a power patch, you'll get another one of those.
Good idea.
Yeah, what doesn't get replaced, or what will be a full fee, is sometimes we see that the Chromebook has been demolished with like a hammer, and we're like, what just